Calling the Library Board of Trustees Work Session Public Meeting to order at 7:03 PM. I don't think anybody's on, but if there are public comments, it doesn't look like anybody else is watching. So I don't think there are public comments. So we need to start, but thank you, everybody. I hope everybody's dug out of the snow and hopefully nobody lost power, which was a big, big worry for everyone. So we're going to just, the purpose of the meeting was
Meeting was?
Was to go over the, just talk about the different policies so that we could vote on them, hopefully at the next meeting. So we're going to start with the financial policy. I think the main things that we talked about at the last meeting, I made those corrections or the suggested corrections. So we, we had, we started with basically, well, the treasurer and then, so anybody have any comments about 8B, the treasurer? Anybody want to, do we like how we have this here right now? Okay, so then.
So I sent you guys an email, but you probably didn't get it, but I can go over the content.
What email are you talking about?
The one you haven't had a chance to review yet. So I'll go over it, but you know what I'm going to do is I'm going to, I printed it because if I go over it, then you won't be able to see me. So just give me one second to grab it off the printer.
Okay, this is about the financial policy?
She said it at seven o'clock, so it's, I think.
Oh, okay. Yes, I see it came at seven when, of course, I wasn't looking at the emails then, okay. Oh, she did.
So I'm a little out of breath, but I'm back, sorry. Air current.
Okay.
All right, so on the, on the policy, as far as, I had two types of things. I had things that are actual comments in, that we could go through in the context of the policy. But, but what Lane had asked me to do was not put them directly in the document. And so I put those, I listed those out, but the, but before we even go into those, we could talk about some of the specific aspects. So I didn't actually see anywhere in there the specifics of when a check is signed, which isn't technically hypercritical, except for that it is meaningful in the process. So I didn't know if that's something that we wanted to adjust for. And I know that that caused some confusion in the past because we were both, you know, signing, we were there as a fiduciary to look over what it was that was being paid as a responsibility for making sure that the, that we agreed with what the library was spending. And then we were also there to sign. And I think actually I would recommend that we write that specifically in because it is, they are specific layers. And then.
Okay, do you want us to, you wanted to say everything or you want us to comment on these things as you go along?
Let me go through this top, sort of like the substance stuff. So the first one would be the.
First of all, we're on the payroll approval policy. I'm not sure what you're talking, are you now on to the claims audit policy? Or you're just giving a, I'm kind of confused about what you're doing here, Liz. And I'm also, just so you know, I'm a little surprised that since Lane and I, I'm a little confused about why, who gave you direction to just send? I'm just a little confused about the whole process, but go ahead.
I did suggest instead of actually going in and changing the actual document, discuss the comments first and then we can decide how to change the document.
Oh, I see, okay.
You know, instead of somebody redoing the document, let's not redo the document, only then redo it again. Let's talk about the concept.
Right, because nobody could, right, because this is, yeah, nobody should be redoing the document except maybe Andrew or, you know, or you or me, since we're the authors of it at this point in the draft. Go ahead, Liz, now. So I guess we're going to listen to all your little things and then we'll hit them because.
So, yeah.
Well, what I want to say is what you're talking about now with when checks are signed is really something that it's not part of policy. And I don't, so that's something that's a managerial thing that's, that's the library does. And so it's, so I don't see any reason to have any.
Well, it's either our treasurer or ourselves as the second signatory, not just the director. And so historically, typically the director's been in that first signatory. And then either the treasurer or we, but this past year we've had a rocky boat. We did not have, first with pandemic, then we had, you know, we had our director depart. We, there's been a lot of factors. So anyways, I, I'm not here to rehash the past. I just want to make sure that the document that we agree on moving forward is, is sufficient for, for anything we might encounter in the future based on what we know of our past. So what I thought I'd do in answer to your question of whether I was going to go through everything or address them one-off, I was thinking I would go through what the bulk of these questions are. And then you guys could tell me which ones and what order you want to address them. And I wasn't going to touch the specifics. You know, I was just going to keep to the high level couple topics. So the check thing was one thing I noticed that, that we should think about whether to include it or not include it. There are other things that are at that level of detail. So it's kind of the only thing missing in my mind. The other thing was the notion of pre-approved versus, uh, to me, it's either pre-approved or it's under a threshold. I don't know that there's a third category. So I wanted to discuss that a little bit and get a little more clarity around it. And where that gets messy, I think, is two places. One is when you have a credit card bill that aggregates things. And the other place that gets messy is when you have a vendor that aggregates multiple instances of something that you're paying for in a way that could either make it appear like you're, you know, if they did the opposite, it might appear like they're disaggregating, but they're not actually aggreg, you know, they're, so those are the two. So that would be like a, like a vendor that came in and cleaned on the weekends. And normally in a month, they would clean once a month and the bill would, in that timeframe, the invoice would come in under 2,000, we wouldn't think twice about it. But it could potentially creep up over the threshold if we use the vendor more times than the instance is allowed. So those are sort of, so, so far we have checks. And then we have these sort of what we consider a pre-approved versus what needs approval and how to handle the anomalies. And I think those are the two things that really required the most discussion. The third was the obvious one, which is the committee or not to have the side-by-side committees. Let me just make sure I am being thorough before I turn this back over to you. Hold on one second.
Yes, and my last.
Can I, can I open, can I open the, let's, let's talk about the stuff you're throwing out already because before we get too many topics on the table. On the check procedure, signing procedure, while I agree with you that the, the policy itself isn't as specific, that was actually purposefully done in terms of, there was several people prior to everybody on this call, were very specific about the difference between policy and procedure. So the way it's written was actually written specifically to try to minimize the discussion between what was policy and what was procedure. So I'm, I'm open to a discussion about it, but just so, just for people's knowledge, it was written because there were other voices that were very specific that the policy should not include procedure. So I just want to start there is that it was not necessarily an oversight so much as a trying to write it broad enough to make it inclusive.
And, and Liz, you heard that, you were on the board when that was being said, so.
So again, it's a different board now. I just wanted to point that out, that that's why it's written the way it's written. If we, if we as a group want to change it, then we can change it. But that's why it was, it's written broadly versus specifically.
Okay, so what, and so what the first thing, so the thing with the checks, do you want to talk about that? Because the proceed, I, I'm a little confused about what you, how you see, what's happening now is the library has the invoices, a check gets cut for them. And then for that specific invoice and then the direct, it's coded with what the budget code is and it's approved by the director. He, the director signs it and then the treasurer or one of the board members signs the check. And then, and so that's, that's how it's done. The, the board can, you can say that perhaps, you know, I don't think you need to specifically say when the check gets signed because the bottom line is, let me just finish, Liz, before anybody interrupts. The, ours function as fiduciaries is to make sure that the money is being spent properly. So if we get all the checks at a board meeting and look at them right before the board meeting, because that would be okay according to the controller as long as there's some, some proof that we are doing things correctly and as board members, we're making sure that everything is, matches up. So in principle, if there's a problem with, with, with a bill, then it's pulled out of the, the stack of bills and it doesn't get paid. Whether the check is signed or not, it's, 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 it doesn't matter because if they're signed, it's pulled out, it's not paid. You know, it's a matter of like logistics. So I think that the purpose of not being that specific about exactly when it's signed makes sense. I mean, maybe other people will disagree. I'd feel that, you know, you want to have a policy, you need to have a little bit of procedure in here just to make sure that, you know, it says that somebody is looking at the bills. And that was the big problem before, there was no claims audit policy. So the policy was written in the most broad way, but it still solves the problem of, you know, and, and follows the law. So that's what I have to say about the checks and how, Andrew, how do you, I mean, it's a little bit different because you're, we don't have a treasurer now and everything. Do you have any, as the CEO of our organization, your thoughts on this, please?
I'm fine with having the check signed after the board meeting. I'm used to, you know, the, the invoices and the, the report that Joe puts together for us being sent to the board members ahead of time for review before the board meeting. Everything is then approved at the board meeting. And then back when we were physically together, the checks would be signed at that point. Other than the few that need to go out early, the utility bills, you know, credit card bills that the, I believe there's a list of, of pre-approved contract type, type checks. And those would be, those we would send out earlier, but would still be reviewed by the board and whoever comes out to sign the checks.
In a perfect world, the checks are reviewed before the board meeting. They're approved at the meeting and they're signed immediately after meeting so that it can go out the next day. In the pandemic world, we're living in Zoom, it's a little challenging. But I think if that is our procedure under the claims audit policy in a, in a, in normal times, then, then we're, we're in line with the policy and what we're ultimately trying to do, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you need to change anything. You just make this less, more general to your point, take more out. And then you can have a separate policy that goes into more detail if you want. But then you don't get into trouble with the level of detail and having some, but not everything.
So let's just go, so the, I don't think we have to say in the policy when the checks get signed. The most important thing, and here it says in the claims audit policy, "All checks drawn on the library account must have two signatures." Okay, we know they have to be signed by two people. "One signature must be that of the treasurer or in his or her absence, one officer of the Board of Trustees." "At least one member of, of the Library Board of Trustees shall review the signed checks and prior to approving them for, prior to the board approving them for release of payment." And then you, we say what things the trustee has to look for. So I think it doesn't, I think the po, the policy, the policy, the claims audit, audit policy as written is pretty, it covers what's the most important thing. If you want to change when things are signed, I don't know that that needs to be written in here because Lane brings up a good point in, you know, you, you don't know what's going to happen. And maybe it'll be easier to do things like a different way, but as long as, the main thing is, as listed, each claim represents a legitimate library expenditure. Board adopted policies have been complied with in the procurement of goods and services. Each claim is for an appropriate business purpose. Each claim is properly supported and charged to the correct fiscal, excuse me, fiscal year. And each claim falls within applicable spending limits. And then, and that's, you know, that's the important thing. It's, it's, when it's signed is, you know, that's not the, that's not what's important about the claims audit policy. Does that makes, does everybody understand what I'm trying to say?
I, I think it's two different things, right? The checks have to go out, they have to get signed, that's important. And you need to know who's doing that separately. Yes, this policy is, there's no problem with our policy. It's two totally different things. Whether you argue that that's the one detail that we're not going to specify or not, fine. It's not, to me, whether, whether you want to specify it here or not, I would like it specified for our clarity. And also, you know, it, but that's fine. If you don't want to specify it here, I can live with that. But we still should talk about what is, what are we doing when Lane goes down there and sees a credit card statement for over 2,000?
So, so Liz, I'm going to, I'm going to make the argument that the credit card is for convenience and that each bill, each item, line item billed on the credit card is a separate bill.
So can you write, yeah, so can you write that into something somewhere? So that's where I think we'll benefit if we do take this and make it a separate policy and don't worry about the detail here because this is bogging down our financial policy and making it impossible to have a policy approved.
No, it isn't. Lane makes a perfect point, the, the credit card is for convenience, each sep, each bill.
Charge is a separate charge. The each charge is its own claim and should have its own invoice.
Right, and it has its own invoice and it has its own budget code with it. And the, what the board would have to do to satisfy whatever your little, your concern is, Liz, for a check that will be signed for over $2,000 in the beginning of the year, the board can authorize payment of the, you know, can say that the credit card could be authorized for.
Because you're not pay, you're, I mean, you're paying the credit card company to pay the, the claims on the credit card. It's, it's, it's not a bill, I mean, it is a bill in itself, it's really a bill of bills.
Right, agreed. So either the financial policy should cover that on an, on a consistent, ongoing basis in some way by saying, you know, when a bill is, when there is a financial services company providing a financial service, you know, to facilitate payment, that that could exceed the $2,000 limit, that's one way to write it. Or we have to put it on the director to every January when we do our budgeting and when we do our approvals for the year, that he needs to make sure that's one of the things that we make a resolution on and annually manage that type of scenario.
That usually would be covered by a credit card policy. And you would state that the, you know, how the credit card is used, but also that each claim on the credit card is its own bill.
Do we have that?
We have a credit.
I don't think, I don't think it's in there, but let me take a look.
It's not in what we're working on now, but Andrew, if you look, I'm, I was just about to say, we have a credit card policy and it's covered.
We do.
Yeah.
So, so we have that language in that policy, Ronnie?
I have it right in front of me now, so, but I.
Okay, Andrew's looking.
But.
Go ahead, Shari.
Before we move on, right in that claims audit policy, just before the bullets of what the trustees shall ensure that, one, two, three, four, that line says documentation prior to approving them to release of payment. I think it needs to be documentation prior to board approving them. That gives the impression that the trustee that is signing is approving.
You're, you're right. I thought of that and I'm glad you mentioned that because prior to the Board of Trustees approving them for release. Did you find that, Andrew, or no?
I did. It is not in the current policy. I'm actually going to share this with everybody, but it's basically says that all, it's established in the name of the library and the director. Bank statements and correspondence will be sent to the public library. And credit card is only to be used for work-related travel, time-sensitive utility bills, antivirus software, prepayment materials were required by vendor, kept locked. It will be paid by check after approval by the board. And expenses may be incurred under the following conditions. Prior approval of the expenditure has been given to the director or assistant director. Expenditures must be within the guidelines of the particular activity of the approved budget. Card is not to be used for personal expenses. And proper documentation to support the expenditure must be submitted prior to the receipt of the monthly statement. We could add a fifth point to that that clarifies that individual claim, if the individual claims cannot be above $2,000, not the total credit card bill.
Without stating, we don't really need to do that because if you want to spend over 2,000 in one thing, you can't.
You don't need approval anyway.
Card without getting pre-approval. So you don't really need that. The thing is, the credit, let me, the credit card total might be $3,000, but it might be 500 for this, 500 for that, 700 for this, et cetera. So if the only, you don't need to put that in there because we already have it so that if you want to spend more than 2,000 on anything, you have to get our approval.
I think Liz was suggesting that we, that we add that to make it clear that it's not the total of the credit card bill, but each of the expenditures. Did I understand you right, Liz?
But I think Lane explained why it's not even necessary to do that.
So the question, that, that is the basic question, Ronnie. It doesn't matter what, what I want or you want or anyone wants, it's what do we need to do? So do we need to either in the financial policy or somewhere else, the credit card policy? I don't know. Do we need to put something that says that when this credit card shows up and it's $3,000, that we're going to approve that and the reason why? Or every time we go to approve that, are we going to write this is an exception because blah, 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 blah?
Like, to write that it's an exception for the simple reason that each separate charge on it is like, as if it were, you know, let's say five charges, then five separate bills. So I don't see the need for it, that's my opinion.
Nashad. But we're writing a check to the credit card company. That's the problem is that.
Yeah, but they're, they're then using it to pay the various claims.
I understand, but that's an implicit, and I'm trying to make it explicit that when I approve that particular check, where explicitly does it say that I have fiduciary permission to approve that check? So I'm suggesting that either I would put it in the finance policy somewhere that when a financial instrument is used to facilitate payments and appropriate invoices and approvals have been met, trustees can approve, you know, can sign, you know, or that, that the, the instrument can be paid off.
I get your point. I mean, I'm not disagreeing with your point. I think you're over-complicating the concept, which, I mean, if we can add a sentence, I don't care. I don't, I'm indifferent because I don't think it's, I don't think it's required because I think it is implicit. If you want to make it explicit, then we can add a sentence. But I don't think, I don't think by using a credit card, you're breaching the policy as well.
I, I know, but I think it comes up often enough between the credit card, between vendors that will have a repeat charge that will be an allowable charge, but that might go over the threshold. I feel like there would be a way for us to add it to this document in a way that we always feel 100% comfortable.
I think then the kind of the sentences, individual claims on a credit card, are claims posted to a credit card or paid via credit card are considered individual claims versus the credit card being assumed a claim as a whole.
And, and, well, I, well, if you're going to do, if we agree that we want to do that and everybody has to agree, it would be in the credit card policy. I still don't see why it's a problem and I don't think it's, it's necessary. So that's my opinion. Nashad and Shari.
If something requires explanation to another board member in order for them to do the job, then it probably should be documented somewhere.
Well, I, I signed plenty of those and it made sense to me. I didn't need anybody's explanation, I'm just saying. I'd like to hear from other people on the board, Shari.
So a simple one line on the credit card, as Lane was said, was said, that, that might be helpful. So as a new board member, if I go and I have to look at a $3,000 charge, I might question it why it is, but that would clarify it for someone new like me that it's not a aggregate, but it's individual ones.
So the credit card policy will have to be looked at because it's not going in this pop. It's, it's not going to be in this, doesn't it?
Why, why wouldn't it be here where the approval takes place? Wouldn't this be where, because this is the review and the audit?
This just gives the, what the reviews are for different things. And here we're not saying two things over $2,000, that's in another part of the, the financial policy. The credit card policy is part of the financial policy, it's just not in the part that we worked on. What led, what number is it, Andrew? Can you quickly tell us? It's eight something, it's probably.
You're muted.
Oh, thank you. Let me go through this.
It's six, it's section six, section six.
I mean, again, I don't think it matters which piece, where it is in the policy so much.
It's not in what we're working on today, that's my point. It's nowhere in here. So we have to go and find the, the credit card policy. We'll have to deal with the credit card policy separately because I don't.
No, it's, it's in the finance policy because where you talk about what purchases the director could make in the threshold, that's where you would add in. And by the way, credit card charges are considered individual and not in aggregate so they don't affect your threshold.
I think, I mean, you could put another sec, either section, I don't think it matters so long. If you put, add to one sentence in either section.
Well, to Liz's, to Liz's point about like ARCA, which I think you were, was one of the examples you used, Liz.
Right.
Where when we need to have multiple, multiple different services by them, we tend to send out one check, which. which that check may be larger, even though it's multiple invoices that are all under the, the amount.
Yeah, that's, that's different.
Oh, I thought that's what you were, I thought that's what you mentioned as well.
That's, that's.
The second point.
Let's stick with the credit card one, because that truly is, it's when there's a financial instrument, and if we want to just gate it to the credit card for today, that's fine. And I think we can pop it right in as number three under, um, let's see, purchases over, well, no.
Would, would everybody be comfortable with the one, essentially, like I said, one sentence that says individual claims on a credit card are considered individual claims, and the credit card is, the accumulation of the bills on the credit card are there for convenience and, and considered approved? So long as they're under each individual claim is under the threshold?
Yes.
Well, one, Nishad, we haven't heard anything from you. I'd like to hear from you, if you don't mind, Nishad.
Um, sure. Um, I think what Lane says, a, a line would be, you know, would, would make sense, as long as just put in the right spots of where we want to put it in. And, um, that might take care of what Liz is talking about, and cover what Lane is talking about, where every, um, every purchase is individual, is just everything can come up together to more than 2,000, but every purchase in that credit card is most probably under 2,000.
Okay. Um. All right. Well, I'm not sure exactly where you, where you, where you want this to go. And in the policy, I mean.
Maybe.
Let me circulate a sentence. Let me circulate a sentence, and then, like I said, I'm not sure it really matters if it's in the claim on it or in the credit card policy. Let me circulate a sentence, see if everybody agrees on the sentence, and then we can stick it in either place.
Yeah, I mean.
That, that closes the loop, right?
All right. Why don't you put it in writing, and then we'll, it's, since, we're going to have to deal with it next week anyway. We're not done, we're not going to. So I think then we can figure out where it could go. I'm trying to find the credit card policy myself. Here. Okay, um.
We kind of bounce around from, we have, and maybe it's just because of the, once it's with all the changes accepted, it will work itself out. But I'm wondering if it's part of the upfront as its own room and numeral somewhere above treasurer.
And it may be because of like where it talks about like what requires approval or not? Like where it refers to the $2,000 limit, et cetera?
Yeah, the, the, the entire section 8A, where we're talking about purchasing and bidding regulations, I think at the end of that, as the last separate item under that, you could put this statement.
Okay, I, um. And why couldn't it be in the credit card policy?
Because that's how he used this as a credit card, not how we manage the finances of the library. So it does, it's more about the finances of the approvals than it is what he, how he used it. Doesn't change the usage.
So where are you saying this should go?
So I think this is part of the upfront purchasing and bidding regulations. At the end of that, before we get into treasurer, we add a comment about when we're using a financial vehicle to pay bills, those bills are considered disaggregated and must be approved through the same process as all other, uh, library commitments.
What do, what does everyone else think about that?
Uh, I'm indifferent. I mean, I think, I think that's just a quick, a simple sentence that says, you know, payment of credit card is there for a matter of convenience. And so long as the individual claims on the credit card, um, do not require additional approval, uh, the aggregate thereof is otherwise approved.
Right, right up that, um, all right, Lane, send us that, and we'll put it in here someplace. Oh.
It looks like it would be a good fit right at 8A, right between either position one, position two, or three, because it talks about the maximum expenditure, uh, I can have without prior approval, then it talks about above that threshold. So it seems like it'd be a natural fit to put it right there as part of that.
Which, where.
So that's, it's under 8A, the very first two, um, one and two both talk about the, the limits. It seems like it would be good somewhere right over there.
It's essentially an exception to the rule.
Okay, so you're saying it should go in the beginning somewhere. All right, we'll have to, um, well, Lane, write it up, and we're going to figure something out.
Easy enough.
Thank you. Okay. So, um. Okay, so now where are we on this?
And then, like, Liz's next point was something, for example, uh, in ARCO, where, do we have, we have like a contract. You're talking about somebody who has a, a contract, and then they come in and do extra work for us. Because I think any work, any work under a contract is already pre-approved, because it was via contract, and it's just a function of, um, if we, if we say, ARCO, you, we've contracted you for so many hours on a annual basis, and you come in and do, we need you to do a special clean, does that special clean puts the bill itself over the approval level? But I think the underlying pre-approved contract should be excluded.
Right, if you have.
Yeah. And I, and I think on that one, Andrew clarified really well, which is that you will have a separate invoice for each of the ARCO things. So even if the check is written out for, for like 3,000, you should have separate invoices, none of which are greater than that amount unless we approved it in a motion or at the beginning of the year.
And any amount of that, that's, that's, that's part of a pre-approved contract is, is excluded in terms of needing any kind of additional approval.
So. Well, not necessarily, because under the threshold, it would be part of the approved budget, but that doesn't necessarily tie directly to contracts. So Andrew would have to alert us if all of a sudden we were overspending.
Let me give you an example and tell me what, where you're coming from. So let's say ARCO, by, just for an example, let's say their monthly bill that's pre-approved on our contract is $1,500 a month. And we ask them to come in and do a special clean that costs $600. So that your bill is going to be for $2,100 at the end of the month, but the underlying 1,500 is already pre-approved. Do you, are you saying that you then need approval for the additional 600 bucks?
No, if you had a contract that was approved, you're fine, but there are things that we pay for that we don't necessarily have a contract for, where the cost, you know, where the, where we could have multiple instances in a month that, that goes over the threshold in aggregate, which is still fine. But in that case, Andrew might tell us, hey, we're spending more in this category than I anticipated, if it is actually more faster, but it may not be, you know?
He doesn't have to tell us that he's spending, if he has separate bills for separate things, and even if it's, if it's all for ARCO, like Lane explained once, even if it's, if it wasn't, if we didn't even have a contract with them, if three different times in a month, in one check, it came to 1,800, or over $2,000, that would be okay.
It's the, it's the, do you buy what, you know, what, one chair at $700 apiece, uh, once a month, you know, one every, every month? Or do you buy 10 chairs at one time for $700 apiece, right?
Yeah, that's the flip side of it.
I don't think, Andrew has to, the director, let's take people's names out of this. I don't think the director has to explain that they had to, that if they got three separate invoices from, or are on a bill from, uh, like the lawyer, for example, okay, we've approved all the things, but she, we could have a bill for $4,000, and it'll say, on this date, they did this, and this date, they did that. So the point is, there's nothing to explain. Uh, you know, as a trustee, when you look at a bill, if, whether, the problem is, if the trust, if the, if the director does something where, on the same day, they have something for $1,500 and $1,500, and they said, split it up. Like do, you know, paint the, paint the children's, uh, program room and paint this other room, and instead of, you know, they did something like that. That's disaggregating, and that's not allowed. But what is happening, I think we're spending a lot of time talking about something that's pretty simple, and that, um, I think we can move on. So, does that make sense now to everybody, that it's not a problem if something is, and they're not going to have to question the director why ARCO is getting, for example, $3,000? And they're, and they have separate amounts?
And if they came and cleaned three different times, that would make sense that it's.
Exactly. Okay.
I mean, I think that's, that's where you're over, that's where the whole point of, I think, reviewing the bills, make sure it isn't something that you're uncomfortable with. And if you're uncomfortable with it, bring it up to the meeting.
Right. Or you just simply ask, it's not anything that needs to be written into the policy? Anything else about the claims audit policy? I mean, it will make that correction as per Sharae. Thank you. Anything else?
Yes. So we were going to talk about the role of, uh, finance and the role of the claims audit committee, if we had a separate committee. Um, that's something I'm very much interested in having all of us have behaviors that are tied to our fiduciary responsibility. And I think splitting the two roles, so that we have, uh, more behaviors tied directly to the fiduciary responsibility would be wise, and it would also keep eyes on where the, how much money we have, how we're growing it, and, and what it needs to be allocated for, and equally effort against making sure that we're doing the best job at having the right efficient policies, controls, and money management in place.
Okay, so we have a finance committee. The finance committee is composed of the finance officer and the secretary. So that's the finance committee. There's not going to be a claims audit policy, a claims audit committee, because we have a finance committee.
Well, I don't think that's for you or me to decide.
My opinion now, Liz. Can I finish?
Okay, well, maybe don't say there's not going to be then, because that's not an opinion, and from the president's chair, take the responsibility of being open-minded.
Well, I don't see any reason to have a claims audit committee, because we have a finance committee. So I don't see the need to have a finance committee and a claims audit committee. The finance committee is composed of the finance officer, uh, the finance officer and the secretary. And they can take the responsibilities of, um, doing all the, the things that it says in the bylaws, what the finance officer does, and it makes sense for the secretary to also be involved in the, um, in the, uh, in the process, because they're the next one who's going to be the finance, the finance officer. So that's where I see we don't need to have a claims audit committee. And anybody else want to, um, weigh in on that? No?
Okay, I'll go a little bit further in on it then. So I, I know we're still supposed to talk about committees that our president would like to have us add to the bylaws. I would like to back up, and I'm not sure what each committee will do, but I think we should talk about the finance committee and that role, and the responsibilities. And then talk about how that, whether that, you know, whether one committee, and by de facto, because there's only five of us, we can only ever have two people, two trustees per committee, whether we want that finance committee to be, uh, you know, and I do see that finance committee as taking the lead role, and the audit committee being a, a, as I called it, I think, a cousin to the finance committee. But I, but I do think that it would make sense to have a separate team that was focused on making sure that the, that the policies and procedures were what we wanted, and that we were doing, um, doing the audit work as we had envisioned, and that it didn't fall on one person's shoulders. We, we, we put forth a committee here, I mean, a, a, a policy here, which rests on one of the five of us to be managing the claims. I don't see that as fair or, uh, smart. I think there should be a committee, as the lawyer had also indicated, and as I found in my research, is not an uncommon thing. Most places, if you have $3 million in money that you're managing, you would be expected to have a separate audit committee. You, I understand we have different rules, and we, you know, aren't required to do a lot of things, but it's never stopped us from being the best fiduciaries we can be. And I think that, um, I think that a lot of things could have been done better, had I, had I had a committee this past year. I know that there were many other mitigating factors, so I will never know what would have been, but having just left the role that, uh, is most intimately familiar with this, I'm advocating that my fellow trustees consider, uh, looking at this as two separate roles with separate people and separate deliverables. The finance director unfortunately would have to be on both, but they would then have specific people to turn to with specific roles under them.
Liz, can you define what you want on the finance committee and what you want on the claims? Like, what would be the difference if they were separated?
Sure. So, so I would imagine that the finance committee would be meeting regularly, that the finance committee would be, uh, over, you know, operating with, um, I, I don't know if we, I guess we still have our ad hoc budgeting committee, but that also reports into the finance committee. And so the, um, the claims audit committee is almost like the other part of the year, when there's not a budget committee, there's claims auditing. Um, but basically, what the, what the finance committee does is they, they're looking at the budget, they're looking at the big picture, they're figuring out what the funding needs are based on our strategic plan. They're looking for where, where we're going to get, you know, how we're partnering with the Friends organization. All those forward-facing things, fundraising, uh, communications, um, you know, is all of that. Then behind the scenes, there, there's an au, an audit committee, and their job would be to be reviewing the, the procedures and the policies that the finance committee is living by. And then, and then they kind of work in concert, but basically, you have, you have people that are, that are designing and maintaining the fiduciary responsibility on, on the policy, and saying, yes, you did that, yes, finance committee, that recommendation, yes, that works with our policy. And also annually, hey, we looked everything over, and this is where we see the best opportunity for the director to make more money on our money, or maybe we're not making, we see there's money sitting in this account that doesn't get interest. We want to, the audit committee might pick up something like that and push it forward to the, to the. We want to, the audit committee might pick up something like that and push it forward to the, to the finance committee. They're in tandem, but the audit committee's job is to make sure nothing gets lost, stolen, that everything is as it should be. It's, it's not much more than the finance officer's role as we defined it previously. But I think we're asking too much of the finance officer for one person to do that whole role. And I would like to see it formalized where annually there is a report, and that's the committee, not an individual, but a committee that would work with the accountant and the treasurer and implement some of these changes that we need to make to automate so that we don't have such a huge review burden, um, because that time and effort should really be spent on the strategic plan and, uh, things that we can do that nobody else can do.
Well, a lot of things you were just talking about, the treasurer is responsible for, like making sure that the investments are in a good, uh, place at, and et cetera. So that's number one, the treasurer, that's why the treasurer's responsibility. Anyone else want to, any comments for Liz or questions about that?
Um, is it possible, you, you mentioned that, uh, finance committee, a lot of work is about budgeting. If that's done part of the year, can they switch role and do more auditing the second half after they're done, or?
The, right, the budget committee, the, the budgeting work is basically, they'll work with the, the budget. It's January, February, and by March, it's done. So the, um, finance officer and the secretary, who are the, the, who are the finance committee, because that's what this board voted on, we didn't call it, we called it budget, but I am now calling it finance because it makes more sense than budget, and it broadens the role, they could be doing this job. I mean, I, I know I had more time, but for a whole year, I actually did all the, the checking of the documents myself. And, you know, the way it works is all the trustees are responsible for looking at the, to make sure all the payments are correct and checking the bills, it's all our responsibility. The, my thought was that, okay, give the finance officer something to do, so that's what I did. And that's why we, um, when Lain and I worked on this, we thought that would be the person that would do this. Now we have, we expand the role of the finance committee then, and say that they can do this. I mean, that's two people, and if they can't come in, then we call and ask for somebody else. It's for two years, it's basically worked. If it was really too much for you, Liz, you know, you could have tried, you could have asked us for more help if it was that much of a burden, and, uh, I'm sorry if it was, and of course.
I didn't say it was too much of a burden, and I'm saying that there were things that I wasn't able to accomplish that could have potentially, I'm saying we don't know because we didn't have the luxury of not having COVID and having a stable staff and a stable board. So we don't know, but what I'm saying is that having just completed this role, I think the role would be, I think our board would be a lot more productive if we split finance into two committees.
But you still have the finances are on both committees, so the person is still doing everything, essentially.
Right, but you would have henchmen in two directions as opposed to henchmen in one committee as, so that's where you get more.
Many of us, that's the part of the problem.
Right.
I mean, my personal opinion, and I've, I've been quiet because I was hoping other people would speak up and give theirs, Liz, I think it's overkill. Um, that's my personal opinion. Um, I think that as, the role of the finance officer is to do exactly what you want, what you're trying to get them to do as an audit committee, but, um, I, I think at some point you'd have too many committees going, you just need people to do their damn job. Um, and, and as long as that's what they're doing, that's really the goal.
So we aren't.
Is, is, I mean.
Okay, but look at the, look at where we are and the things we need to get done and where we're focusing. If our most important job is finances, and we're wasting all our time looking at a statement that should be a click-click automated process, but there's no one and no place where that process is getting done right now, then maybe we, you know, maybe that the focus isn't in the right place for our collective five members. Because I don't see how you're going to get financed from where we are to where we want it to be. I mean, maybe, maybe, I'm not discounting your amazing skills. I just know that Ronnie didn't get it where she wanted to get it, I didn't get it where I wanted to get it, and you said to me the same thing I said to Ronnie and the same thing she.
I don't really understand what you're talking about, Liz. What didn't I get, I feel like I accomplished a huge amount in even getting this organized, so what are you talking about? I'm.
Each of us has accomplished a huge amount, but we're still not where we want to be. And we're, and, and we want to be automated. We want, you want to be able to see everything before the meeting so that we can all look at all of it. I mean, that's your wish list.
Okay, having it automated is not, that's something that's a managerial thing, that, that's something that, that the director can work on. That's not in our domain. We could say, we've said, we'd like that done. I don't see how having, I, 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 thank you, Lain, I agree with you 100%. We have, we're only five people, and yes, we've managed to do, you know, an amazing amount and getting so much done in the past year with COVID especially. So I think getting it automated, that's just, okay, let's figure out how to do that. You don't need, and we've agreed, that's something that needs to be looked at. I've mentioned it to Andrew. Andrew has just started here, he's only here, what, three months? He's working without a staff assistant, he doesn't have an assistant director. There's only so much that he can do, and he, this is.
There's five of us, and one of the five of us is asking for more fiduciary oversight, and the other four are sitting back and saying it's overkill?
No, we're not, you're, you're.
I think we have added lots of fiduciary oversight already. I don't think, I mean, what, I, I, I'm not, I really just, I can't figure out what a different, what additional committee does. Let's just do the job.
That's fine, you're saying as the finance committee, you're going to cover the entire aggregate role that we're talking about. That's, yeah.
So I think that, um, how, let's go back to the claims audit policy and, and, and that's, I mean, we, we have the finance committee, we'll look at some of the other things that, um, automating things. That's something, like I said, that we've talked to Andrew about. And we are not, oh, I think you're misinterpreting Lain's, uh, use of the word overkill. Um, Elaine, if I can, um, defend you slightly, you are not, we are all very responsible and very, um, fierce in our, in our taking care of making sure that everything is done properly financially. And, um, I think that to say that the rest of us don't want more fiduciary responsibility, we are doing a great job of being responsible in that way, so I, um, that's.
Well, you're not taking the lawyer's suggestion or mine.
Lawyer, I asked the lawyer, and the lawyer did not mean audit like what you're talking about. And I also spoke to Jerry Nichols about this. He knows a lot about all the, the laws and how these things work. And he said an audit committee is not something that's needed in, uh, that's actually, school, district libraries don't have that. So I thought it was clear when I contacted the lawyer that she meant a committee, which could be the finance committee, which would be the secretary and the finance officer. She did not mean an audit in the way you were using the word audit.
I'm not using the word audit in any way different than her. What Lain is saying is that she's comfortable with all of this role, that audit committee being tucked into the finance committee. And I'm saying, fine, I don't like it, but if Lain ultimately is, is taking the lead on this, so if that's how she wants to conduct the year, that's how we'll do it. I'm okay with that, I don't like it, but. Agree to disagree.
There isn't an, an audit committee, it's the finance committee who's doing this work. And that's, so, that's, that's, um, it's two people who are going to oversee the fini- the, um, and take care to make sure that the claims audit process is properly done. They will also work with the treasurer, and they'll work with the director on the budget. Right, Lain? And, and Nishad, because you're the, that committee. And I have the utmost confidence in the two of you to do a great job. Okay, anything else on this po- the policy? And we, we also tabled the, we wanted to discuss the petty cash policy?
Well, we could start still on this policy. So in here, uh, you, it, it is said that the resolution would come from the, uh, the finance officer. We typically, as a board, have not pre-prescribed who's making which motions, which I personally like because then I feel like everyone is 100% invested in the entire meeting, and there's not a sort of, um, pre-canned kind of, it's, it's, it, it has purpose as opposed to ceremonial. However, a ceremonial thing is faster and more efficient because we know who's going to make the motion, who's going to second it. This one just brought that whole thinking to my, to me, and I don't know if it's deliberate that it's defined here or if that was lifted from somewhere where they're more deliberate about who makes what motions, if we wanted to leave it.
I don't understand what you're referring to. What are you talking about? What motions?
Um, the part about that the, um, the audit committee shall make a recommendation to the board of trustees for payment of each expenditure at the regularly scheduled B- board of trustees meeting, that part.
Where are you seeing this?
In the claims audit policy.
I, I don't know, I don't see what, what you're talking about, Liz.
Under eight D, under number five, the first sentence says the audit committee shall make a recommendation to the board of.
That's from the, that's an old thing that you're looking at from the, but that wasn't included in, I don't know what you're looking at, but that.
That's the last version I have from you after it came back from the lawyer.
No, well, we sent you a new version the other day, but last week, that has that taken out, because that was the lawyer's. So you're looking.
Then I don't have your version.
Well, it was sent to you last week by Andrew, you got the board packet for this, and it was.
Yeah, no.
Your version.
So this was the last one that came my way, um.
Well, it didn't come from, it didn't come, no, it's not the last one that came your way, it was sent last, um.
It was not in the packet.
Andrew, can you find that and send it to her, and you sent to her?
Yeah, let me look for it right now.
Got it last week. Did everybody else get that, the new version of the, I'm assuming everybody else got it? Yes, Joe, you got it, right?
Yeah, it, it, I see it in the board packet.
For, for tonight, yes.
I don't see the reference to, uh.
Yeah, so that's not in there.
The recommendation.
That was, that was, that was from the lawyer, and we took that out.
Wait, you, which board, not last, it was not in last week's packet?
Packet that was, Andrew, can you resend it, please send it to her now?
Yep, I just sent, I just forwarded it back to you, Liz.
All right.
It was sent on, um, Tuesday, January 26th.
And it's a new version of, it's this version of the, um, but everybody else has the one that I'm talking about, right? The new version. It doesn't have that. Okay, so, um, that's not in there, anything, um, let's go to the petty cash policy. People weren't sure if they wanted to, um.
Yeah, this is the new, yeah, this I have, this is, this came out not, this wasn't the, um, this was from earlier today.
No, I sent this, if you look at the header of the email, this was sent out January 26th at, uh, 3:40 PM.
Yeah. Okay, so, let's move on because it's already.
I'm on it, I got it open, I'll go to the section and see, let me just make sure.
Update, while you're looking at that, Liz, let's talk about the petty cash policy, and you can, we'll go back to that. If you have anything else to say. So petty cash policy. Anybody, everybody happy with how it is? We were going to wait and see? Nishad, Show Ray, Lain?
I haven't, huh?
I'm sure you're okay, you're okay with it, Lain? Show Ray, Nishad, okay. Okay, so, um, Liz, if there's anything that you can talk about with the, um.
So, so we took out all the language that the lawyer put in specific to the finance officer.
Well, we took out what she put about the claims audit, yeah, we had decided that last week. Last, when we looked at this last time, I went by the edits that everybody gave me, I looked at what we talked about, and then I, that's how I, um, I, I changed, I, you know, updated it, because that was her suggestions, and since.
So, I, yeah, I mean, if we're not going to have a claims audit committee, then we, then this should say, then we should use her language for the finance committee, because otherwise this really doesn't say, uh, you know, it's not tied to anything but the five of us still.
But I think, well, what do other people think? Do you think that's okay to leave it open like that so that it says at least one of the, one of the members of the library board shall review? And that leaves it.
As many officers in the hospital, somebody else has to be able to step in.
Right.
I mean, I'm fine with it, I just think the lawyer was going for a greater level of fiduciary responsibility, and we kind of backed out of all of it.
I, I think.
We're back to what we had originally.
And, and I think we all have a strong fiduciary responsibility, and we're all acting in very, um, we're fulfilling our obligations that we're elected to, so. Um, and we will have the, the, um, the finance officer and backup with this secretary, and then the rest of us, anybody else who, who wants to go, and anybody can go look at them. It's not, um, it's everybody's responsibility, and I, and so. Okay, anything else about that? Can we move on to, um, this, should we do the safety plan now? Andrew, the safety plan. The safety plan, which is the safety plan under the umbrella of the pandemic policy? So any, um, did everybody review the safety plan? Yes, while everybody's thinking, I must excuse myself for one minute because my dog needs water, I'm sorry. Okay, so the safety plan, which is a, Andrew, you want to talk about it, please?
Totally, so this, uh, the safety plan is under the umbrella of the pandemic plan, or sorry, the safety, uh, yes, safety plan. It's specific, yeah, the pandemic policy, uh, it specifically discusses. It specifically discusses how the library will operate in the course of a pandemic. How the services will either be reduced or reinstated. How we maintain operation during closure, how the employees, what the employees' responsibilities are, as well as their attendance and activities. How we communicate both in-house and out of house. Uh, and then we have reopening phases for how we reintroduce services as we're able to. We talk about the cleaning and safety protocols, which Bill may be able to, to add some information about. Positive tests, out of state travel, um, support for the contract, contact tracing. What we do if we have to close the library. And then, um, a safety chart in response to the micro cluster made metrics. And I know, Liz, you sent, um, an update with your notes, uh, a little while ago.
Yeah, no, nothing, uh, I don't think there's anything we really had to go through. I thought under communications with the public, I had a little reordering. Um, and then, uh, uh, and I thought we could break out the last two as, and as necessary for the library director will contact the town, blah, blah, blah. Um, and then, uh, further down where we have supporting the contact tracing. Um, I just reworded the last sentence there a little bit. Again, that's just editing. But I think, uh, and then a little bit of re-editing of, uh, the, the, the events that would be affected on the third to last page.
Okay, um.
Yeah, all, all of the changes seem perfectly fine.
Why did you change the ordering of the, um, because it's, it's, it's not an order, it's just a list of communication.
Right, it's just a list, but it sort of has a cadence to it. In terms of like, we would update our, our phone message would probably be the priority because that's, I believe in our disaster world, the phone is still the primary for everything. But if that changed, maybe that would be, you know, maybe posting to the library homepage would be number one. So we could play around with the order, but I think there's a more logical order to that, to those four or five things. And then the, the last two in the list, the library director will contact people and the press release. Those things may or may not happen. Um, but those other things would definitely happen. So I would, I would pull those last two out and put a, and as necessary in front of them.
I don't know. Um. What do other people think about that? I don't see. I thought the order was, it didn't make that much, I thought it was okay, the way it was.
I mean, that's one where it's really inconsequential. It's.
Yeah, that's.
It might just help somebody if they were like going down the list of things they have to do. Like, oh, I did number one, number two, so it's not a bad, it's not a bad thought. You know, they can go down like, I did one through five already, still have to do six and seven, kind of deal like that.
But she's changing the, the sequence of them. I mean, I don't know that, I mean.
Yeah, I wasn't, I'm not sure there is technically a sequence. It just is how it's listed out.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I, I think it's.
So I guess the feedback to Andrew would be if it's consequential and there appears to be a natural order, put them in that order. If there isn't, don't. And then the secondary question is, do you guys see the last two items as, as necessary? Or do you want them lumped in with those other items?
What do, what do you mean? The library director will contact the town of Newcastle and those you don't think are necessary?
Well, I think that we're saying that within 24 hours of the library closure, we're going to do specific things. And I'm not sure that I want to put those last two items within 24 hours. Um.
I think that the library director contacting the town and the school district should definitely be done in 24 hours. Andrew, what do you think? You're the.
Uh, I think it depends on how, how much we have to shut down. If we were having to, to say, close the library for two solid weeks, we would absolutely do that. If we had to close for 24 hours just to, to clean the building, we may not do a press release to the local outlets just to say we're shut for one day. So I, I think that's fine to add, you know, when, when deemed necessary. Do those following steps.
I'm, I'm okay with as necessary. It, it may or may not be required, that you just. Again, it, in a perfect world, six months from now, we'll never have to look at this again.
Well, let's hope. Okay, and.
And if we're not careful, we will, we will be done with the pandemic before we're done with the policy.
And Andrew, I did want to, I, I just didn't mention the one under cleaning and safety where added staff are responsible for ensuring, uh, their compliance. I think it, we should put something like that because we're saying that we're, we're offering the minimum of six feet. But we can't like, we can't enforce, you know, they have to manage.
Yeah, no, that's, that's perfectly reasonable to have them. Absolutely. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with all of the changes you suggested, Liz.
And thank you again to the team that worked on this. It's really good work.
You worked on it. You were on the policy committee. So I was.
Wow.
That we didn't see these changes previously, so. Okay, um, let's see. So what else? Is there anything else that you saw that you wanted to change here? But a, a good deal of the work was done by the Miriam Safer, Robin Friedman and Ann Lim, who the wonderful staff members that are on the committee. So. Any, was there anything else? That you wanted at, updated on this? And it is a living document and it is the, um, it goes under the pandemic policy. Okay. And no one else has any comments on that? So the next thing is, we're going to talk about. I think that's basically, let's see.
Uh, we were going to then jump to the RFP if anyone had any questions. Bill and Joe are.
Bill and Joe can leave. Thank you. Bill, did you want to say anything about the safety plan? You were a good help to the committee also, by the way, I have to say. Bill came to one of our, the meetings and helped, uh, helped us.
I, I actually, have I seen that, Andrew, since it's been updated? I just took a quick look in my email while we were discussing. I don't.
Uh, I sent it to you and Joe as well. I could look that up to see when.
All right, I, I'll find it. If it's there, I'll find it.
Uh, yeah, I sent it to you on the 27th because I realized I had only sent it to the board.
Well, that's why I didn't find it. I was looking on the 26th.
There you go.
Okay, I'll look that over. Can we discuss the, uh, snow removal and landscaping RFP?
Please.
Yes, we've, uh, we put it out to bid. We invited, uh.
I'm going to leave.
Okay, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank, thank you. Good night.
Good night.
See you tomorrow, Andrew.
See you tomorrow.
Okay, we invited, uh, four vendors to, uh, to bid on the, uh, the RFP. It was Mount Kisco Contracting, the incumbent. Vista Landscaping, who, uh, among other properties does the Mount Pleasant Library. Maxner Landscaping, who does a lot of work for, uh, the Chapakaw School District. They, uh, they are the backup when their, uh, in-house staff isn't enough. And then Carmelo Appolonio, I've had experience working with them. They've also, uh, done work at the library. They, uh, it was a number of years ago, but they dredged the pond, I think, twice in front of the library. They also just earlier or late last year changed some, uh, coping stones on the building for us, a small project. So we asked for a three-year contract rather than going through this effort every year. The apparent low bidder is, uh, Appolonio. His three-year total was 97,91971. I don't know if you have the, the tabulation sheet in front of you?
I think so. Is that the, the, where, where it says the snow removal and you have the, all the vendors listed and everything?
Yes, and all their prices.
Yeah, we have.
I just don't know, I don't, you know, do you want me to read it out or have you all see?
We have it. So your recommendation is go with.
Or Carmelo Appolonio.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Because we'll vote on it next week.
And is this snow removal and landscaping?
Yes, this is the whole total.
And when, when would the contract start?
Yesterday. It's approved. Uh, what, what, Andrew, I suggested to Andrew that he, we, uh, agree to pay Carmelo on his per diem rate, which is $88 a day, if you stretch it out over the, the whole year, until the contract is signed. And if the contract is not signed for any reason, uh, then we could pay him his, uh, current time and material rates.
Okay.
One question, yeah, one question I have. Can the cost of landscaping be separated from snow removal? Not for the purpose of dividing the services, but for our understanding how much, like I was thinking, if we're going to refine, reconfigure the, parking area and, uh, uh, some of that area, if there is a way to make it more, you know, less maintenance.
One, one vendor did, uh, actually before we put it out to bid, the incumbent, uh, gave me, it priced the way you're suggesting. And, uh, he was right about 50/50.
Okay.
I think on his, his original budget, and his bid actually came in higher. I don't understand it. Uh, but his original budget was, uh, a 15,000 for snow removal and 17,000 for, uh, landscaping.
Okay, so that ballpark figure would be fine. It doesn't need to be. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, uh, any other questions and then we can vote on it next.
Yeah. Can you talk to us, Bill, a little bit about, like, obviously, the, you know, having the same person do it, they're getting the benefit of, you know, maybe it won't snow that much, maybe it will, landscaping. But how are, how is this contract set up in terms of, um, like, how do they, like, if we have a really bad winter, are they going to come back? Is there like a caveat in the contract that says up to a certain amount? Or if there's a spring storm and all of a sudden there's twigs all over the lawn, are we going to get hit with an extra cleanup? Like, how do, how are those things sort of?
Yeah, there, there, there are a couple of things in there. Uh, one is, uh, removal of the cloud snow from the parking lot or the, the fringe. That is not included. That's a change order. We have unit pricing for that. You say the late, uh, spring storm with, with twigs all over the place. In there, he has to do one end of season cleanup. And we, we do that to protect him. If we tell him to do the end of season cleanup and we get an early April storm, well, then we, we may have to pay for it again. You know, and that's, you know, that, that's probably rare because, uh, you know, we won't clean up too early. When I've worked on other jobs, sometimes there were events in the spring that, that we had to have the winter cleanup done early.
And with our configuration, I would imagine that we would need to get a lot of snow before we would run out of places to push it on our own property?
Yes, actually, yes.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you so much, Bill, for everything and your patience tonight. And we'll see you next week.
Okay, very good. Good night.
Thanks, Bill. I'll see you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow morning, Andrew. Yep, bye.
So the next is to talk about, uh, the amending the bylaws and codifying the committees. So everybody has the, um, proposed amendments. And I think I explained previously that it was important to have this codified because in the past, we had board members who didn't see the reason for having a policy committee, which is policy and, um, finances are like, and oversight are our biggest responsibilities as trustees. So it's, and it's very common for boards to have bylaws that include the, the committees and, and their in there. So. How? Any comments, questions? Thoughts? No? So we're.
I mean, I, I can start if no one else wants to go. Uh, just didn't want to jump in ahead of anyone.
Does anybody?
No one else has any comments?
Didn't have any comments.
Okay, I, I mean, I suggested that the meeting would run long tonight and we might want more time before we discuss, uh, modifying our bylaws in this public session. Um, so my recommendation would be that we adjourn our work session at 8:30 and, and, uh, put another one on the calendar at another date so that we can, A, give ourselves, uh, a little bit of the evening left. And also, we'll have the benefit of some time before we discuss the bylaws again.
Well, I don't see any reason, we have, um.
I'm with Liz in that I actually have something I need to go do, so, um. But I, I mean, I, having a proposal in front of us, I mean, we have to post any change, suggestions, I think, at a regular meeting. Leave them up for so many, so much time and it's not a quick action item to begin with.
Okay, well, I, okay, fine. So now you've gotten notice of this today. And then we'd have to, well, we wouldn't vote on them for, um, 10 days. So I guess it's not, we'd have to vote on them in March. So, um, if you don't want to, I mean, we did.
I, I wouldn't, I guess my thought is I would recommend posting them again at a regular scheduled board meeting just so that, because we changed the bylaws.
I wanted to have it discussed at a work session is to see, before I posted it, I wanted some input. But, so now I'll just post them next week as the, uh, proposed amended bylaws. That's fine with me. If you want to adjourn the meeting, that's fine with me. So, so now I'll just.
Why, why would you want to post something that we haven't reviewed? Is there a reason why you're rushing it through?
Well, I thought we would be discussing it tonight. I'm kind of surprised that, one, you, I've decided that you didn't want to discuss it tonight. That was the purpose of the work session, to discuss these things. And, um, so I'm really surprised. It's only, it's an hour and a half that we've met. And so I'm just surprised that you don't want to discuss them tonight. So we can discuss them at the next board meeting and then, um, but I just, I'm really surprised because, like I said, this was a work session where I sent you, I mentioned these a while ago. I mentioned that, that I was going to do this at the last board meeting. Then you had, uh, got these a week before and now I'm hearing, well, you don't want to talk about them tonight, so.
I, I, I have something I need to attend to, so.
I understand that, Lane. And I do understand that, but Liz, before you even said that, was already pushing this off, so.
Well, it's 8:30.
I know, but there's no we don't have a time limit, you know, as to how long we can meet. I understand that. But yeah, I'm just I guess I'm just disappointed that and and
Understandable. We'll 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 take it up at the next meeting next week.
Okay, so somebody wanted
I'm sorry we didn't get through more, Ronnie.
Well, you know, I, okay, so let's adjourn the meeting. Somebody make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:34.
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.